The meeting and welcome everybody on Zoom that will be watching. Tonight we have a short agenda, an important one. And first will be a presentation by the Parking Committee to the Board, the Village Board, to seeking their approval. We're not going to be asking, just for everyone to know that's watching. We won't be taking a public comment on the Parking Committee report today. We will be setting a date soon or, and I think we'll be going over that when we'll have a public hearing. And at that time, everyone, you know, will, will be able to comment on what the proposal is moving forward. So with that said, I'd like to introduce Jack Goldstein, who is going to be presenting the report and as part of the committee. And Jack, it's all yours.
Okay, can, are you seeing the PowerPoint now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay. So just moving on to the table of contents for a second. There are a few thoughts that I think are important to, to consider as you're reviewing this. One is that you'll see when the committee introduces itself that it's made up of members who have very different perspectives on, on parking and on the village and have different life experiences of the village. But I'm really glad to be able to say to the Board and to the public who will see this, that we're bringing our set of recommendations to you all unanimously. And we work very hard to achieve a consensus based on our belief that this set of recommendations will be good for residents, will be good for business, will be good for visitors, and will be good for the village as a governmental body. Second, to keep in mind is that we are not presenting or recommending an infrastructure approval, an infrastructure solution to the problem. We are not making recommendations for the construction of a parking building, nor are we recommending any significant capital investment, either in equipment or hardware of, of any kind. What we are doing here in these recommendations is trying to make the highest and best use of our existing resources. And as such, because we are not putting things in the ground, we're not building structures. All of these recommendations are subject to modification. They're subject to reversal if they prove to be ineffective to, to the level that we would hope that they are. And so we are asking both the Board and the public to view this set of recommendations as a pilot project that will need to be tested over time to see how it's working and how it may need to be improved. At the end of the day, if all or any of these recommendations prove to be irrelevant at any time, they can be reversed. Fourth, again, important particularly for the public to understand, not everyone is going to be happy with these solutions. And we didn't make universal happiness the goal of the committee because it's an impossible goal to set for oneself. But what we have tried to do very seriously is to develop public policies in which everyone is treated equally and that are fair-minded and effective. That too remains to be seen, but that's where our effort was placed. And finally, telling you something that you all know. This is a complicated problem. And the, the village has tried in the past to resolve this problem or solve this problem in different ways. It's not been easy and it's not easy because it is complicated. And so what we've tried to do in this presentation is to simplify it down to a comprehensible snapshot of what it is that we're recommending and what the effects will be. Okay, if you can hold your questions to the end of the presentation, that would be great. If you can't, then that will be acceptable. So moving on, are you seeing my cursor move?
Yes.
Okay, so to begin with, I'd like the members of the committee to introduce themselves and say a few words about their relationship to the village and the like.
Your first.
Can I just ask for clarification regarding, hi, Mr. Goldstein. I'm a resident of Halliday Street. My name is Claire. Just for clarification, when you say comments can be held to the end, but are we allowed to? What is the protocol if we have comments during the presentation?
Well, what I said was if, if the Board could hold its questions to the end of the presentation. I believe the mayor, perhaps you weren't on, Dave, do you want to address the?
Yeah, the, what we're doing, what we're doing tonight is, and actually I'm not sure how people jumped in here, but what we're doing tonight is the Boards, the Commit, Parking Committee is presenting to the Village Board of Trustees and to see, you know, for their approval or blessing on moving forward with, with the recommendations of the committee. So tonight is just basically for the Board so that we can move it forward. And if the Board agrees on that, then a public hearing will be set. And, and that date will be, you'll have two weeks and plenty of notification. And at that time, the public, you know, will, will be able to comment on everything that you see tonight. This is kind of more of a broad stroke also. We're not really getting into the weeds tonight or how we came up with some of the things. So which will be better explained at the, the public hearing for the public. So for tonight, we're not going to be taking questions or comments from the, from the public. It's just kind of moving this to the next step, which will be public hearing and public comment.
Okay, and Mr. Morandi, are residents of the streets directly affected, considered public?
Excuse me?
Are, are you considering residents of the streets who are directly affected part of the general public? And is there going to be an opportunity for the residents of the streets who are directly affected to be heard out, you know, outside of public forum?
Yes, at the public hearing, we will hear the public, meaning the general public, people that will be affected. Store owners, if they're not residents, yes, you know, people that are affected by it, yes. I think that to answer your question.
And how will you notify us when the public hearing will be held?
It'll be advertised in the papers, it'll be on our websites, it'll be as many places as we can get it. And will be, I think, do we have a date already or kind of, we might have, it'll be definitely, there'll be plenty of ways will be.
And the last thing that I want to do is hold up the, the presentation. But I just wanted to be noted that as a resident of the street who's directly affected and I, and I feel perhaps not in a fair and equitable way, I am not happy that I was not notified in advance. There was one trustee who notified me on the street and I'm grateful for that. But there was no direct notification of the people of the residents.
If I might interrupt, the reason that that is, is because this really isn't for the public right now. I mean, this is, this is our first step to see if the Board is willing to look at, and, and we really shouldn't be having this, I don't know how, how public comment. This is already public comment that I didn't want to have. If I can explain, I don't know how I can make it clear. Tonight was just so that it was going, it was being a presentation from the committee to the Village Board, because the Village Board has to, has to approve moving this forward. The Village Board could say, that's great, these all sound like great recommendations. We're not willing to move this forward. Or we can say, yes, this all sounds good, let's go to the next step, let's see what the public has to say.
I understand that and I don't want to take up any more of your time. My, my concern is just that there wasn't, you know, a whole lot. As a resident of a street who's directly affected by this and, you know, I was not notified that there was even any conversation happening around that. And just as a, as a taxpaying, you know, resident of the village, that is a lot of concern to me. And, and I'm gonna, you know, hand it over now and I appreciate your clarifying about the public comments, but I just would like to say that that is quite a concern. And I know I'm not the only one.
I'm sorry, I can't alleviate your concerns by my explanation, but this is kind of how, how policy will work. And that's all I can say, that we're not trying to, we're, we're working to get this to a place where the public can comment on it. And, and that's, that's what we're working on right now. And the public and everyone will have plenty of notice and will have plenty of time to comment. There'll be weeks of notification, then there'll be at least a week after that, you know, when we have a meeting for the public. So there'll be plenty of time and everyone will be notified. It'll be, it'll be well advertised and the buzz will be on the streets and I'm sure everyone will know. So with that said, Jack, if we can continue and also Jeff or whoever is controlling tonight, can we just stop public comment? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And we were at the point of the committee members introducing themselves. So I don't see Evan is on, but Rebecca?
Hello, I'm Rebecca Ramirez. I've been a resident of Cold Spring for years. I'm a business owner, own a business of Cold Spring Cheese Shop. And I am on this committee because I would love to help make our Main Street better for, better serve our residents.
Okay, Rebecca, can you turn up your volume a little bit for the next time? Thank you. Is Dan there?
Good evening, my name's Dan Valentine, I live on Garden Street. I grew up in Cold Spring and spent most of my life in the village on the street. And I'm a volunteer in the fire department.
Thank you. And we have one member, Evan Hudson, who is not on the call tonight. I also.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, Evan, you're here?
Yes. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, can hear you.
Yeah. Evan Hudson, 19 High Street, lived in the village since, I think, 2009 with Andrea, three kids. And very happy to be serving on this committee. I think it's doing incredibly important work for the village.
Great, thanks. Two people I'd like to mention who are not on tonight. One is Patrick Beesman, who was a member of the committee early on and then had to drop off because of other obligations. And someone who is not a member of the committee, Emily May Cheadle, but who has been helping us in develop some of the mapping as a public service. And so we're very grateful for their time that they put in. Let me talk a minute about the methodology that the committee used, because we tried to do a lot of homework before developing the recommendations. And part of that is, as you'll see here, that we went back to look at the history of other attempts to deal with parking in the village and to examine as much as we could, the current conditions. We're all working on the assumption that tourism has increased and is likely to increase in future. And so that this management problem is likely to become more and more acute. It is a variable, of course, but that is one reason why we opted for a flexible set of recommendations that could respond to changing circumstances. We looked at the major stakeholders or constituencies and, and, and called out residents, business owners, visitors, and the village as constituencies that were most directly affected, although not exclusively so. And those residents include the residents within the parking area, the public parking district and the district itself and those out of those areas. We tried to get the best counsel we could, including consultation with the New York Conference of Mayors, which is, as it sounds, a group of mayors. And the, their purpose, I mean, is, is, is not staffed by a group of mayors, but represents groups of mayors. And their purpose is to help other municipalities provide professional information and the like. We did look at other municipalities that have dealt specifically, nearby municipalities, to see what their experience was of a variety of solutions. We spent a lot of time talking to suppliers of some of the expertise that we ended up feeling that we needed. And then we tried to develop recommendations in a timely way. We would like to be able to institute this program for controlling and managing the issue of parking in time for as much of this tourist season and the autumn tourist season as possible so that we don't need to deal with some of the acute issues that we faced last year. The Parking Committee goals were, I think, broad-based goals and had to do with, again, a management approach to this in mitigating the negative burdens that are borne by residents and visitors and businesspeople alike by overcrowding vehicular traffic and, and the experience again that we had last summer of more visits than we were prepared to handle at the time. We also worked very hard to find reasonable and equitable proposals that would be acceptable to the public at large and the constituencies. And that had a good chance of working and that were common sense proposals. Number three, we were very concerned about reducing the traffic congestion and the negative environmental impacts that stem from it, from in fact calming the whole parking issue, which is responsible for a great deal of greenhouse gas emissions, if only through the, the idling that we find going on and circling that we find going on trying to find a parking spot. And so rationalizing and clarifying where, how, and when people can park is going to be a major factor, we hope, in reducing some of those negative impacts. And we made it a goal to try, and I don't like the term, but commoditize a portion of the parking net, that parking recommendations. As you probably know, the village does benefit from the commercial activity generated by tourists, but it doesn't benefit directly. It is an indirect contribution to the village's operating budget that comes from the county level. And so what we hoped to do here was to provide a revenue stream that went directly from the tourists who are visiting and who were, who were using goods and services in the village that the village was paying for and to make it available directly to the village so it could handle the problems that it needed to directly. So, and improve the budget overall. So those were the goals. They are not, I think, unusual for a situation like this, but I do think that they are the underlying, reaching these goals will provide the underlying platform for achieving a better quality of life in the village and greater financial security. So the next slide, I'm going to take you through the five recommendations. There are five of them. Three of them actually represent a designation of parking areas. Two are more administrative. so here we go. These are the recommendations. One is to implement the residential parking permit area, the expansion of the area that already exists. Number two is to implement park mobile app-based metering on Main Street, limited side street and ancillary locations. I will be going back through all of these individually, but this will give you a look at the comprehensive package of recommendations. The third is to engage United Public Service, which is a company to provide meter enforcement, the meter enforcement function, which is separate from the metering itself, to designate additional sites within, within the village for visitor and, and non-resident parkers in the resident district. Sites perhaps for dedicated merchant and employee parking and parking for the unbanked, for people who do not have credit cards, do not have bank accounts. And there are a growing number. And we thought it was very important to, to provide parkings, parking spaces for those visitors as well. And then finally is to implement a public information campaign. If these changes do go through, as we hope that they will, they're going to be a, a, I don't want to call them as much as a shock, but they will be new to visitors and they will be new to residents. And it's going to be very important for them to work that we engage simultaneously with the implementation of the regulations, that we engage in a public information campaign so that people understand where to park, when to park, how much it will cost to park. Moving on, I just, we have a general map here, which is to give you a context in which we are operating. And this, in three different colors, illustrates the three recommendations in terms of designating parking areas. The, and again, I will, we can refer back to these, but there are basically three kinds of parking areas that we're looking at. Excuse me, four. And the yellow areas, yellow streets, that's High Street and Church, Garden, Rock, Stone Street are the 11 blocks that are under consideration for a residential parking permit area. The blue represents free parking. And I'll get into the details of that. The free parking or the existing regulations, current regulations that the state requires whenever there is a residential parking permit implemented, district implemented. The pink areas are those that we are recommending for metering. And the green down here, which does not show up well on the Boulevard, and actually it should go around the corner on Campbell Avenue, are some of the areas that we are considering and recommending be designated for things such as merchant owner and employee parking, some more free parking. There are a variety of uses there, but I will go into that in more detail as we move on. So let's get to recommendation number one, which is to implement an expansion of the existing residential parking permit area. And the 11 streets you'll see on the slide that have been approved for this purpose are Railroad, Stone, Cross, Garden, Church, High, Northern, Halliday, Furnace Rock and Campbell from, from Main Street to Rock and, to the Rock and Wall intersection. Let me take you back for a little history on this. Establishment of this kind of a residential parking district requires state approval and the adoption of a local law once that approval has been granted. We have, the, the village of Cold Spring has gone to the state for such approval twice. One in 2005, when the, when a residential parking district was established to the west of the railroad tracks and it currently exists now. And then in 2015, when this 11-street expansion was proposed to the state, the state approved it and the Village Board of Trustees enacted a local law enabling it to, enabling it to implement it at a time it saw fit. When establishing one of these districts, the state imposes a certain number of requirements, legal requirements. One is that within that district, 80% of the parking spaces on the street have to be dedicated to residents within that district. And 20% of the spaces have to be reserved for non-residents in that district. The configuration, in other words, where you put the 80% and where you put the 20% is flexible. And it can be configured in a number of ways. But what has to pertain is that whatever kinds of regulations, that is the hours of operations and the like, have to be applied equally to resident parking permits and to non-resident parking permits within those areas. and again, so that, those were requirements under which we were operating. In terms of due diligence, there was a, a report made to the Village Board of Trustees last autumn of a number of Townsend villages in New York State that had tried to or did adopt residential parking permit areas and how they fared with them. And generally, the, I believe that's been sent to you all. And generally, the experiences were positive. Let me talk a little bit about the practical side of this. The village code requires parking spaces to be 18 feet long. And within the 11 streets that have been designated for this purpose, there are a total of 247 parking spaces. 80% of 247 is 198 and 20% is 49. The committee is recommending, and so this is to say there are enough parking spaces. The committee is recommending that the issuance of permit be tied to the real estate conditions rather than something more variable such as car ownership, which can change very quickly and over time. And, and we felt was a less reliable way of calculating the number of permits that we were going to need, that the village was going to need. And the committee is recommending that residents with off-street parking be granted one permit and a residence with no off-street parking be granted two permits. And what this leads to is that there are, within this area on the 11 blocks, there are 124. there are 124 units that have off-street parking. And so that's 124 permits. And there are 33 units that do not. And so that's an additional 33 permits, which means that the total number of permits for residents is 157. And then the 49 permits for the 20% of the non-residential parking. Let me show you how that will be distributed with this map of those 11 streets. And you can see, along with the space numbers, if you can read it clearly, in green are the 49 spaces that will be dedicated to free parking within the new district. Nothing changes with those spaces. You can park there for as long as you can park. A resident can park anywhere, and there is no charge to parking there. On High Street, Church Street, and Garden Street, part of Furnace Street, part of Campbell Avenue, Rock Street, and then Stone and Cross and Railroad Street. In yellow shows the number of permits that will be restricted to residents. And and then, thirdly, the blue that you see are areas which are under consideration for metering as well. We find that with the number of street spaces available and the number of permits that appear to be demanded, that there are 41 discretionary spaces within this area. And so possibly some of those can be dedicated to metering, possibly other purposes. But this is the general impact of the imposition of this, of what we are proposing. Now, in terms of operations, the regulations, in other words, the requirement of having a resident permit will operate every day from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The means of identification of those permits will be a hanging sign from the, you know, from the rearview mirror that will be designed. The issuance of permits will be administered by Village Hall. The requirement to have the permits will be enforced by the village police, who will be able to tell very quickly if someone has a residential parking permit hanging in their window. We are proposing a $10 annual fee for each permit. And there will be permits available for day visits of workmen or other kind of service providers if if they are required, as a matter of course. One other use of the discretionary permits may be for longer-term guest permits. This is one of the things that does need to be worked out. But what we are recommending is a system that provides sufficient parking that is demanded by the residents as we are defining the method of determining that. And and 20% as the state requires for visitors. So I know that there will be questions, but let's move on. All right. Recommendation two is implementing Park Mobile metering app. Let me go back to the map again here. And the areas now that we're talking about are Main Street in Magenta here, the western portion of Northern Avenue, the village lot, which would be converted over to the new system. As you know, now there's a kiosk there that is very expensive. And an area in front of Mayor's Park, the head-in diagonal parking there. As most of you remember, and I think Kathleen was a volunteer there, there was an experiment last summer of opening up the fields in Mayor's Park to day parking, long-term day parking. And it was, I think, a financial success, but there were, there was considerable pushback in terms of people's reaction to using the fields in that fashion. So for the moment, we are recommending only that those areas outside the fence, those parking spaces outside the fence be metered. And let me go back to number two here. Okay. Now, for the background on this, the committee interviewed three companies that provide app-based metering. There, we are not recommending to repeat any sort of, you know, hardware sinking meters or kiosks into the sidewalks. It's very expensive and very expensive to keep up, and it's unsightly. So we interviewed three app-based companies, and we received printed information from two more of them. And the company that we felt best served our needs was Park Mobile. Having tentatively decided that after online interviews, we, the committee divided up seven villages and towns in the Hudson River Valley that currently use Park Mobile to poll them on what their experience was. And they Park Mobile received very high marks, both in terms of flexibility and reachability and general customer service. And so what we were looking for during this period of due diligence were a set of qualities, again, not unusual, but that we felt were very important. Affordability of the system, the interactivity of the system, how nimble it was for both the village and for parkers to use and get to know. The financial probity of the firm, and by that I only mean the reliability and the accounting done of the revenue. We were looking for system-wide flexibility because, again, we think that over time, it may be that we will find the need, that the village will find the need to either change the rates at which the parking is charged or the time of year perhaps, or change the rates at the time of year. And that is, that is, that is possible under an app-based system. And then we did rely very heavily on positive feedback from municipalities that already had experience. And Park Mobile came out on top. I know that the trustees were sent a comparison of the three companies that we interviewed for a detailed analysis. Let me let me talk a little bit about money. Well, first of all, if you take the parts on the map, the areas we've outlined on the map here, you end up with approximately 200 spaces that can be metered. And these could, aside from Morris Avenue up here, these could be implemented tomorrow if we have the system in place. There is no upfront cost to this system. The Park Mobile sets up the system free of charge. Park Mobile, and it was the only one of the three, provides signage free of charge. And the way Park Mobile makes its money is that they take 35 cents off every transaction. Every time someone parks, Park Mobile takes 35%. Also, it will be the village's responsibility to sign agreements with the credit card companies, which usually take 5% of the transactions. So we have been discussing for, simply for the terms of, for the purposes of discussion, $2.50 an hour for parking with a two-hour minimum in these Magenta areas and the ability to bump up for a third hour, to extend it for one more hour. One of the goals of the committee that, in order to respond to the the issue of both overcrowding, traffic jamming, and environmental impact was to increase the possibility of turnover in these spots so that there was not as much, was not as much running around, you know, circling around, looking for a spot. So if you take a sort of basic scenario of $2.50 an hour times three hours maximum in a specific spot, that's $7.50, and with Park Mobile's 35 cents off, you get $7.15. And with the credit card set at 5% of the transaction, it leaves you with $6.80 per three-hour parking spot. And if you multiply that by 202, you get about, what, $1,400 for the total metering areas for one cycle of parking. And so if you can anticipate two cycles of parking or six hours of parking during the day, then you're at, you reach about $3,000 for the day. And so whether or not that proves to be the reality of this remains to be seen and will be a function of how much people are willing to pay and whether the numbers continue to rise in terms of visits. But the potential for significant revenue coming from these metered spaces without a major investment, save in one case, which Dan is going to speak to you now, without a major capital investment, the potential there is significant to increase the revenues of the village. There are also possibilities that some of the discretionary spaces in the permitted parking area might be used for this. And the Morris Avenue site that you see at the top of the map is the Hall Dane site that, and that Dave has been speaking to the high school about, and they seem amenable to having, understanding that there need to be sports parking there, but having at least some metered parking in that site, in that line along 9D, and splitting the revenues with the village. So as this, if this is approved by the trustees and going through the public review process, if it remains essentially intact, there is the opportunity to 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 see significant financial benefit for the village. Okay, now, whoops, sorry. Recommendation number three, I'm going to turn over to Dan Valentine because this has to do with engaging a company to provide the enforcement function on metering. Those are two separate functions. Setting up the meter zones and accounting for the meter zones and providing monthly analytics on the revenue of the zone would all be Park Mobile's responsibility. But there is a separate responsibility for enforcement. So Dan, I'm going to let you take.
Thanks, Jack. Similar to looking for vendors for the app-based, we also looked at vendors who could support the Cold Spring Police Department with parking enforcement. And one that we seemed to like out of all the ones we looked at was United Public Safety. It does come with a fee, obviously, that would probably be paid for out of the revenue that it makes. But one of the things it would be is a handheld license plate reader, and even the potential for a mobile reader where the parking enforcement officer or the police department could just drive by vehicles and scan the license plate with this handheld device, and it would communicate directly with Park Mobile and determine if that vehicle is legally parked based on whether they paid the fee or not. If the vehicle's in violation, it would communicate through the app, help populate the parking ticket, and actually print it out on a small printer that could be worn on the belt of the parking enforcement officer, who would just tear the ticket off and apply it to the vehicle. The whole system integrates nicely with back office operations at the village, including the court, so that all of the information is communicated digitally to the court for future enforcement. It has room for growth, as I mentioned. It could go mobile, where we could get a small electric vehicle or something, where we could put a license plate reader on, and the officer could just drive around the village checking on the payment of parking. As far as the residential permit enforcement, the officers would just be checking the permitted areas to see if they had the appropriate parking placard hanging in the windshield. And if there was no parking placard, that vehicle would be ticketed as well.
Okay, now, at the time that we were putting together this presentation, it appeared to us that United Public Safety was the frontrunner, basically because they were more reasonable. My understanding is now that Dave and Marie have been contacted by other companies who learning that they were being underbid, are now interested in reading, in talking about what the fees might be for their securing the contract. So this is one of those areas. I left United Public Safety in the presentation because they are the frontrunner at this point, and they do fulfill all of our needs. The cost of this, if it stays, if it remains as it's currently projected, would be about $18,000 for a three-year contract, and it would be amortized over those three years at $6,000 a year. So whereas I say this is the largest cost, single cost involved in this, it is within the realm of recentability in terms of the revenue that one can project, safely project. At least, that is the view of the committee, and I certainly agree with that. Recommendation number four. This has to do with where we might find breathing room for parking and for special constituents that currently have been parking free. And if these recommendations were to move forward, would not, in many of those cases, under the current recommendations, enjoy free parking. And so we looked at areas both, and are still looking at areas that are both under the village's jurisdiction and and private property and are involved. Dave is deeply involved with several of them now. Dave is deeply involved with several of them now, all of which look promising. The area on the map in green, as I said, which should have gone around the corner to Campbell Avenue, could provide sixty one spaces that could be dedicated to shop owners and their employees. There are a surprising number of employees who drive into the village and currently park either on Main Street or on the side streets. We would propose that they be given special permits at a de minimis cost and that they be, that that areas down there be designated for those purposes for the period of time when it appeared to be necessary. The Boulevard Two, the area which is currently designated winter parking, has twenty two possible spaces. Dave has negotiated successfully, which is a more than minor coup with Metro North to dedicate, allow the village to use fifty spaces in the Metro North parking lot on weekends, the southern portion of the parking lot, and to advertise it as being available for free parking. It, as you know, the difficulty with Metro North has been there's always been free parking there, but there's been a hesitancy on their part to allow us to promote that. So that is, I think, a major step forward, and that would be fifty more spaces, which would be free spaces. Could not charge in those spaces. I mentioned to you the Haldane site along ninety, which potentially has thirty six spaces. And then Depot Square would remain the same, remain as it currently is, which is thirteen spaces of two or three hour parking with no charge. And so we felt also that a growing problem in looking at these spaces, not just the trying to separate the employees of the various businesses and particularly of the restaurants away from, taking away from paid parking or adding pressure to residents in the permit parking area. And there are other certain, you know, there are residents on Main Street that would need to be accommodated as well, as best these recommendations can do so. But also, there are a growing number of people who do not have credit cards and therefore could not use the app, which is all by by credit card or phone. They do not necessarily have smartphones, nor necessarily bank accounts. And so we wanted to make sure that there was a fair number of spaces that would be available to visitors who fit that description. I know that the discussions with Haldane are still taking place. Metro North, I think they've had a meeting today with them, and so there is room to breathe, I, the committee believes, in maximizing the use of these very available and very convenient spaces as long as people know that they're there. And the fifth and last recommendation, as I mentioned at the beginning, is that if this is all accomplished. And it is, or the committee is wish that, or desire that it be accomplished, that it be given a chance to see if it's sufficient. The key to it is informing people about it. And so we need to find ways to drive virtual traffic, either to the parking map or other sources of information. And there are websites available to us, the Village website, the Chamber website, Putnam County Tourism website, and the hospitality businesses in and around Cold Spring all have websites and can do so. But we may want to reach out to the tourism industry itself or Metro North to make this widely known, that this new system is being put in place and for people to get an understanding of how it's going to work. And that's for residents or nearby, you know, visitors and distant visitors. And finally, the next steps in the timetable. The, there are certain aspects of what we're proposing. The changing of the direction of Haldane Street of being a part of that, and also the in in the code designating certain of the specifics that will apply in the parking district. And there is, we have the responsibility to seek a determination from the state as to whether this rec, this set of recommendations would trigger CEQA review. And the way that this works is that first, both of those issues would be submitted to the county planning department, which has a month to take a look at them. And decide whether they have any comments to make, and then a a reference at least of CEQA to the state level. Now, it is the committee's recommendation that we apply for a negative declaration of economic impact, of negative economic and a negative declaration of environmental impact to the state, which would, we could expect a response within a month. So what we are envisioning in terms of the timeframe here is that we have at least, at the minimum, two months administrative processes, both at the county and the state level. Within that two month period, our vendors, if they serve to be our vendors, feel that they would need four to six weeks in order to integrate their system, set up their systems and integrate them into our back office functions. Were the the board tonight to approve to this set of recommendations moving forward and giving us time to finalize it and to schedule a public hearing, it would be our recommendation that if that approval were to be made tonight, that a public hearing be noticed and dated for two weeks from tonight or as soon thereafter, two weeks from tomorrow, Monday. And and that the normal week following the public hearing be observed. And so the public hearing process, both on the parking regulations and on the CEQA and the village code recommendations, excuse me, and on the village code recommendations would be completed in three weeks. And speaking to the young lady who was on before, the public hearing is an opportunity, is the administrative and regulatory opportunity for the public to express all of its concerns, and village is obliged, obligated to take those concerns into consideration, not necessarily to accept them or act on them, but seriously take them into consideration. And so we could, if all goes well, fit in the administrative, the remaining administrative functions and requirements within the two months that we're setting for the environmental process, which is all to say that it is possible that we could implement this whole program or the majority of this program by the beginning of July, which would meet the timeframe for a practical test under the conditions that we expect to see. And that is, again, the committee's recommendations, that that should be our proposed timeframe and that we do everything we can to observe it. And hopefully to then to implement a system that we feel on the best of our experience and information and the research that we've done will greatly improve the parking situation, the quality of life in the village and financial standing of the village. So that is it. Thank you very much for listening for all that time. And questions?
I have. Go, Kevin.
All right. First of all, gratitude to everyone on the committee. This is needed to happen, and you have really begun to tease out all of the issues that were intertwined. And I'm so grateful that we have a really strong starting point. What's not clear to me is if in your consideration of the calculation of parking spaces, the residents of Main Street, the apartment, apartment dwellers on Main Street and some single family homes on Main Street, whether those folks are calculated in the resident parking permit areas, and if not, where those folks are intended to go if metering is instituted on Main Street. Because I don't myself have a sense of exactly how many residents with cars we're talking about on Main Street, and I wonder if in your research you did get a sense of that number, and then how you figured them into the configuration of the plan.
We, we did get a sense of them, and they are quite numerous. I don't call the number up, but they are significant. We did not calculate them into the Eleventh Street District because Main Street was excluded from the district.
Because of the enabling, the way the enabling legislation was structured. I see. You are, you are, you are prevented by the restriction of the enabling legislation from calculating them into those numbers.
That is correct.
So in order to, I'm asking a question. I'm raising it as a statement, but I'm asking a question. In order to accommodate Main Street residents and an then expanded residential district, the enabling legislation would have to be modified.
That is correct, but also to do that would then interfere with the metering function of Main Street. And so what we sought seriously to do was to identify other spaces that could be dedicated to people who were, found themselves in that situation, which is an administrative one, but it is also one that underlies the revenue producing aspect, and also the needs of the merchant community. And so we turned to solutions such as Campbell Avenue and the the Boulevard. That are areas that the village currently controls. There are other areas that are being considered. There are areas in the, in the Department of Transportation property, on the Department of Transportation property, which is not being gainfully used at this point on the third street. And it would need to be cleared out. We need to be put into more acceptable conditions. But we are looking at that, and we are looking at whatever kind of excess and ancillary spaces there are. The two major constituents that, of a class that you're talking about, of the category that you're talking about are the Main Street residents and are the employees of the, mostly the hospitality businesses on, on Main Street. I can't tell you right now whether the available ancillary parking spots would meet the needs of all of those, but I'm myself, as an individual committee member, and it hasn't been discussed, would put a priority on the on the residents as having first priority. Also, the numbers, I did do an informal survey of the numbers of employees, and it came up to about a hundred. Were they all in the village at the same time? But they are not. And it is also a variable number because employees tend to, there are many ways for the employees to arrive in Cold Spring. And they can drive in, they can walk in, they can take the train in, and they can be dropped off. And the percentages of the employees that do arrive by any one of those means changes all the time because there's rehiring all the time. And so it's a hard number to try and gratify in terms of dedicated parking. It may be that it is worth the restaurant's while to you know, to have their employees pay the metered spot. We hope not because that's not what we want to see made free use for.
So just to clarify, when you say the DOT spot on Fair Street, do you mean the highway?
Yeah, yeah.
For us, I see.
Yes.
So, so that my two takeaways from that response to the question, and I thank you very much, it's useful, is that you have not talked about it yet, but you as an individual member could foresee privileging residents in those ancillary areas, and that the, the highway department area on Fair Street is a potential sort of ancillary spot for employees.
Yeah, I don't want to go that far to start allocating, but, but, but my own personal sense of this is that the the residents who are taxpayers and, and ought to be treated preferentially in terms of the closest possible locations.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, I think one important piece, this, I don't think it was mentioned, is on is the Main Street is already has restrictive parking. I'm not restrict, I mean, there are restrictions on parking there. And one of the good things about the app is that it's really flexible, and I don't know if we talked about the times. You know, you can, you can adjust to the times of when it's metered and the amounts of when it's metered also. So I mean, you could start the, you know, in consideration for the people, you know, that are living, the residents. You know, you could start the meters actually at ten o'clock or whatever, if you wanted to, to five o'clock. You know, if, you know, again, it's really flexible, which is one of the, one of the things that's nice about the, the apps having the metering through Park Mobile. So on Main Street where it's already like after nine o'clock, it's four hours or whatever, which I think doesn't have, you know, give us the turnover. You could then have the meters and, and have that for two hour parking, which would be turnover. And you could start it whenever you wanted. So it might be a little more restrictive, but we're, we're trying to take all that in consideration also.
And you could vary it through the week. Excuse me, Dan. You could vary it through the week too. Yeah.
You can vary it whenever you want. That's.
And you could turn it off at night.
Well, that's, that's, I think what we, we didn't mention was if we were to meter parking from ten AM to five PM, even the residential permit parking, once five PM happens, anybody can park anywhere in the village overnight until ten o'clock the next morning, and then they can't park in the residential permit area without a permit. And if you're in the metered spot, you got to pay the meter. And so it's only a few hours during the day that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a few probably fast, small questions, but I have a number of them as you were talking, Jack. On your, on your slide that talked about the designated sites for visitors, you listed a bunch of streets. One of them was Haldane, you said, period of thirty six spaces. I assume you're talking about Morris Avenue by the Haldane School and not Haldane Street. Is that correct? Or are you talking about Haldane Street? It was the recommendation for slide.
Yeah, he was talking about the, the parking lot across from the tennis court on Morris Avenue.
Okay. So it's Morris Avenue, right?
Yeah.
And not Haldane Street where it says Haldane periodic. Okay. And the second part of my question on that, um, Depot Square, um, from what I understand, Depot Square, most of those spaces are part of private property. Are we just counting them because they're open spaces? Cause I don't believe the village owns too many spaces on Depot Square.
Uh, I, I don't. I think that you're, I think you're correct that that is private property there. I think that along understanding with the private property owner that I'm not familiar with, you know, in terms, but what we essentially decided was to leave that the way it is, not to disturb that.
Okay.
Anyway, so it would continue as it currently, uh, as it is currently regulated. It would be free parking and I believe it's two hours in the line of the restaurant parking and I believe it's for across the street in those few parks.
Okay. A few others, Jack, I'm sorry. Um, you talked about the resident permit being from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. Is that seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay. And you also spoke about a visitor or temporary permit for maybe people who have to work. Is there going to be a fee for that or how do we get that?
I don't think that we discussed whether there would be a fee for it. I again, personally would recommend not. I think it is, it's a convenience permit and I think it should be available. I, what we probably would need would be the license plate of the vehicle that was expected. I bet that is my point of view.
And from, from what I heard just before this conversation, um, we can, can we zone the village differently? So say, for example, parking on High Street is not as expensive as parking on Main Street, or is it all going to be the same price?
Can we zone it?
Can we zone like?
There's going to be different zones in the, uh, working through Park Mobile. So like, uh, we could have main, uh, yeah, Main Street could be a zone and then some of these side streets can be another zone. The metered parking at the Amuni Lot could be another zone and you can have as many zones as you want.
And they can all be different.
And they can be different. Yeah. And that'll register when you go to pay.
Yeah. And I have one, one last question. On Park Mobile, it was 35 cents per transaction.
Yeah.
So if I park and pay for the first two hours, which is a minimum, it's 35 cents. If I want to add another hour, it's an additional 35 cents or no?
You know, Fran, I, that, I, that came to me about an hour before this presentation tonight when I was working out. And I honestly don't know the answer, whether they take another 35 cents or not.
The way the current meter works, if you go online, I think it's a fee every time you add money to it.
Okay. Honestly, we, we didn't ask that during the discussions. As I say, I did think about it, but didn't have time to follow up, but we'll get, we'll get the answers to that.
Okay. Yeah. I ran out of questions and again, I'll, um, echo what Kathleen said. This has been six years in the making. You guys have pulled this together in a very short period of time. So thank you so much.
Super grateful. Jack, could you go back to the color, the, the Google map image?
Yeah.
Please?
Yeah.
So on the, there's a, it looks like it's a portion of Cross Street that is also pink between Stone and Fair. Is that intended or is that an error?
That is intended.
That was intended.
Okay. So a short portion of Cross Street will also be metered.
Metered. Yeah. It's a certain number of spots there.
So pass, pass the big corner.
Not sure, not clear yet, Kathleen, where it will be, but part of Cross will be metered and part of Cross will be residential permit parking.
Okay.
And I think, I'm sorry, I think that on the other map that you had on the two slides down, there were some metered parking spaces on the beginnings of High Street and Garden Street and Church Street and Furnace. Those are, those are also going to be metered with the buildings.
All, all, all streets as they abut Main Street, we are going to attempt to have permit, uh, sorry, paid parking for some number of those spots. So High Street, Church Street, Garden Street, Stone Street, Cross Street, Rock Street, Campbell Avenue and Furnace Street. And then on Northern Avenue, uh, the section between Fair Street and Garden Street will be metered.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And, and also Fran, look on Church Street, we are reserved, there are four spots in red and that's for the firehouse parking.
Right. Uh huh. I, I, I'm surprised. I see that you have 23 residential parking, I believe on one side of High and 20 on the other. That sounds like a lot. Um, and I'm sure you counted them all out, but I didn't think there were that many houses on High Street.
But those are the number of spaces, not, not the necessarily the number of houses.
Oh, I thought those were the number of permits.
No, 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 no. Those are the number of spaces for residential permits.
Got you. Thank you.
And that's a function of 18 feet.
Right.
I will say that I'm, I am quite concerned about the, the density of population we have on Main Street and that, that those folks do have are, are, are privileged in whatever location can be the closest to Main Street. And so if someone's coming in for shift work, you know, the, the, I, I I'm remembering a conversation I had with Marie, which was enlightening to me about a study that she read about people wanting to see the park, the space they're going to park in. And that, you know, we do have other parts of the village that people don't loop through, right? That don't have the same impact as the lower village because they're just farther away and people don't think to park a little farther away and walk down. So maybe some of those more or less impacted streets in the upper village become the areas where employees park. So they walk, they have to walk a little farther, but they're here for the day. Um, and that also could spread the impact. Now this won't be a popular thing to say, but it also spreads the impact to other neighborhoods and reduces some of the congestion in the neighborhoods that are so hard hit by the density in lower Main Street, the density of parking demand.
Did, I did want to add two other comments to that, to that point. One of the benefits of the Park Mobile is for, say the municipal lot, you could actually look on the app and see if there's spaces available.
Oh, brilliant.
If they're paid for or not. Uh, it doesn't mean somebody's not parked in it. They just, they didn't pay for it. But, uh, looking at the app, it'll show you a map of the village and where you can park, uh, what's, and what's metered. The other point I wanted to make just on this map alone, uh, I know there's a comment about Haldane Street and there's a notation about a, a one-way. That was a brief discussion, which is not part of the parking committee's suggestion. That's for another topic some other time.
That's, that's part of the, the code update chapter. Um, Dan, do you?
No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's, sorry. That's not the case. Um, Haldane Street and Railroad Street are both being proposed to be changed to one-way streets. And that is to prevent the congestion on those streets and the inability of emergency personnel to navigate the streets when there is parking on both sides of the streets. Haldane Street, for example, cannot be navigated. When there is parking on both sides of the streets, it's not wide enough. So, so the recommendation for Haldane Street is to go to one way and to have parking on only one side to allow emergency person, uh, emergency vehicles to get through.
But that is not, right. That's, that's, sorry.
I, I, I'm not sure what your question was.
I think those.
It's not this committee's recommendation. It's, it's, that's a trustee question, right?
I think this is part of our recommendation.
Part of the, part of the parking committee's recommendation? Okay.
That's how I.
I, I don't think the parking committee is recommending the one-way street. I, I, this is my understanding at least. I thought we, we received the information that Haldane was going to become one-way and we're, we're making the recommendation about the number of free parking spaces on Haldane. Um, I think that's the limit of our recommendation. Uh, Dave and Marie, if I understood that correctly.
I, I thought it was part of it, but, um, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. We just kept, during the conversation, we're talking about it. So I thought that's where it came up. So I, I could be mistaken on that one.
One other thing I'd like to comment on Dan's comment, uh, Park Mobile only has the ability to identify non-occupied spaces in metered lots. It can't identify available spaces on, on, on Main Street, which is not going to be metered. Sorry. It's going to be metered, but not metered, not identified spots. It's, it's pay by plate. Whereas the municipal parking lot is paid by space and the mayor's park parking lot would be paid by space.
Dan, do you have experience with, um, United Public Safety in your policing in Westchester? Do you, is that, do you use them in your agency?
I, I don't, I don't. Um, we looked at several different vendors and some were on the cheaper side and some were on the extremely high side. So.
So this just seems like a comparable.
Yeah, they, they've, they're in many cities and have several different types of parking solutions. And they, uh, there's been, since we've looked at them, there's apparently been two other agencies that have expressed interest and want to do it for cheaper. So, you know, uh, our point is really that we recommend a third-party vendor assist the village and the police department in helping to enforce the parking.
Got it. Thank you.
Kathleen, in response to one of the questions you asked right before this about the Main Street parking, I just wanted to say, I, I'm reading this book. It's called The High Cost of Parking. It's all, it's like a giant Bible. And it kind of talks about how, how everyone suffers when you do not, uh, charge for parking. And, uh, it says cities should set the right price for parking because the wrong prices produce such bad results. So the, that, you know, the feature that Dave, Dave was saying that is attractive is very important for us because if we do not see enough turnover, that means the price should go up. Because you, you do not want cruising because that's what creates carbon emissions and that affects our health. So that price would be something that everyone can take a look at. You always want one or two spots opening up. You know, there's this mathematical strategy behind it.
Well, this, that's what pilot projects are for, is to figure out what's going to work and where to land.
Just one other quick one. Um, I don't think it was mentioned that the, you don't have to necessarily have a smartphone also. You can, uh, there'll be, uh, on the signs provided by Park Mobile will have, uh, you can text the number if you don't have a smartphone.
Good for you, Dave.
Good for me. I made that as part of the, that's the only reason why we're taking, we goes in Park Mobile.
Do we have to, do we have to make a vote on this at this point?
Um, I mean, if everyone's ready to, uh, we can, I mean, two of us obviously are on the committee. So, uh, it, it would be up to you, Kathleen, if you need more time to digest or whatever to, or get any more information to move it forward, then you know, we'll do it as soon as you're ready.
I'm comfortable with the presentation tonight. I've read it over. I've looked it over, asked enough questions. I'm comfortable with going forward tonight. It's up to you, Kathleen.
Well, although I am, although I am frustrated with the, the Main Street residence issue, I understand that that was a problem created in 2015. Poorly structuring that residential parking permit structure in the beginning. Um, so we, this is what we have to live with now. And so, um, it is what it is. And I think that we have to make a try. Um, and I'd like to get it before the public as soon as we can. So we have a shot at doing this, doing some portion of this or all of it this season. I'd love to go forward tonight.
Okay. So it's, I don't think we necessarily have to vote or well, we can vote, uh, you know, I'll make a motion to move forward with the, uh, with the proposal and the, uh, the recommendations from the parking committee.
Second.
Second that.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
On the, I'm not sure if Main Street can be included in a, uh, in a, in a residential parking.
You'd have to modify the state enabling legislation first, and that's a longer story.
Not sure if they would allow Main Street since it's.
Oh, right, right, right.
But Kathleen, Kathleen, I think everyone on the committee certainly got the message about that that's an outstanding issue that needs to be addressed with specificity and effectiveness. So that is how we'll spend our time. That's why we wanted to get the go-ahead so that we can refine it down.
Right on, Jack. Thanks.
Thank you all so much.
All right. Maybe say, maybe say good night.
Night.
Dave, you want to make a motion to adjourn? We have other items.
We, we need our screen back.
Sorry. Yep. A few more items.
Okay. I'm going to say good night.
Good night, Jack. Thank you.
Good everyone.
Bye.
Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you, Rebecca and Dan and Evan.
Everybody.
Okay. So we do have two more, uh, items on the agenda. Uh, first one's a quick one. It's approval to hire Dominic Maglia. Hopefully I didn't mangly your name, um, as temporary labor for Highway Department at $13.50 an hour. Um, we have a recommendation from the Highway Crew Chief. Uh, he worked with the village last year, I believe, and, uh, Bugsy was enthusiastically recommending him. So I'll make a move.
Sorry, Dave. That's the seasonal hire for the summer. Oh yeah. I see in his email.
Yeah.
Can I ask a, a question and please don't all kill me at once? Um, if he worked last year and he was really good, um, can we bump him up to $14 an hour? Is that just going to drive us crazy? I mean, it sounded like he got 1350 last year.
I'm, I'm, I'm definitely for that.
I am too. I was hoping that that would be raised. Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the hire of Dominic Maglia, um, for temporary labor at the rate of $14 per hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, and thirdly, a discussion on adding a staffing position, a secretary for the boards and office assistant. Is Jeff on?
Jeff is on.
Yes.
Jeff, if you'd like, would you like to just kind of run through this quickly or?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not going to read through the whole thing. I hope, I know Dave, Dave has seen this, um, the couple of things have happened. Certainly COVID has kind of brought to the forefront the need for our personnel to be as technologically advanced and skilled as possible, which currently, I don't know if we could actually say that. Things are changing, bringing on Charlotte certainly has increased. Uh, as she's doing fire inspections, there's a need to track that. There's a lot of administrative work that, um, needs to be taken up. All this stuff is kind of falling on me right now. Short-term rentals are coming down the, the pike very shortly and there's going to be all the work that's involved with that, as we talked about tonight with the residential parking program. The workload's increasing. It's falling on my desk. Michael has left. Um, so now I'm doing HDRB planning, ZBA meetings. You know, some weeks that's three nights a week plus minutes, which is usually a Saturday thing. Plus Michael, he took care of the video recordings. He did the minutes. That was it. He wasn't a true secretary to the boards. In the past, the secretary of the board has done much more, especially now with the website as we look to move information online. There's a lot of work involved with preparing, getting everything online for the boards, communications afterwards, whether it's public hearing notices, sending out approvals, coordinating stuff with Charlotte. So this is all basically falling on me. Uh, you know, we need to bring someone else in. I do have Ann there. I've, um, and there's no secret and, and I've spoken to Ann about this. Her computer skills are lacking. She's good at the stuff. She does stuff that we need to have done, but anything to do with the computer, the simplest spreadsheet, loading things up to the website, preparing, I think that's, um, that's just, that's not her. So we need a secretary for the boards. I need that person to do more than what Michael was doing for the boards. So I kind of put together this plan that kind of takes into account all of this. Michael was working approximately 20 to 25 hours every two weeks. That was per pay period, doing what he was doing. Michael was working approximately twenty to twenty-five hours every two weeks, that was per pay period, doing what he was doing. Um, kind of went over this with Michelle and we sketched out some things, we came, kind of came up with twenty hours a week for a new person. To do the Secretary of the Boards and also to help out in the office. We envisioned somebody would be in two days a week on a part-time basis. As well as doing the nights for the meetings and then getting minutes done as a. You know, Michael would, Michael did in the morning, whenever, I would expect a new person to do that also. So that's, that's, that's the Reader's Digest version.
Jeff, where do you, uh, sorry, Dave. Where, where do you anticipate putting this person? With Charlotte's office setup?
I have no idea, to be honest with you. Uh, I, right now, it would be, it's probably, the. Most likely scenario would be a shared office with Ann.
Okay, because Ann's part-time.
Ann is, she works fifteen, sixteen hours, it depends on where we are with water billing and there's different things that go on, but.
But overflow space in the little conference room if you needed it for project work and.
Yes, except there's no, we do not have a computer in there, so that's. But I, I would envision a shared space with Ann, I have not discussed this with her yet, she's very territorial about that, but.
And there's also shared space with Charlotte.
Potentially, yes.
She's not there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I haven't mentioned this to you, but, uh, given that Michael currently does, I think you said between fifteen and, no. Between twenty and twenty-five?
Twenty and twenty-five, yes.
Okay, so that averages out to twelve and a half by Ann per week.
Right.
So if we're hiring somebody for seven and a half additional hours per week. I don't think they can do everything that's listed here.
I had the same thought.
Well.
Michael did the key responsibilities, well, he didn't, did, he didn't verify completeness of applications.
No.
He didn't do meeting prep.
Correct.
He did the, um, so, so these would all be a new responsibilities for that person. I, I think the twenty hours a, a week is, is too low.
One, one difference is that the, whoever this person will be, I will do the Board of Trustees meetings. And the minutes for those, I don't, so it would just be the three, the HDRB planning and zoning, I just think it's more important for me. To be at the Board of Trustee meetings and know what's going on and what comes out of those, so that's one meeting that they won't be doing that Michael did, um. But you're right, twenty hours could be too low, I mean, if you wanna say twenty-five hours, uh, that's, yeah, I mean, it's.
Could we start out with, um, doing the, the, the meetings, taking the, uh, doing the videos, posting the videos? For, for the three boards and hold off as secretary for the boards until we see how. That person is able to adapt or adopt to the other responsibilities.
That means Jeff stays on to be for the other boards?
Yeah, that, that, that's still. If you wanna, I mean, you wanna look at, you're saying that's too much for somebody, well, let's see, but. What I, you know, what that leaves for me to squeeze in into thirty-seven and a half hours in a week is. Difficult, so.
So, so you are currently performing everything, uh, which is under secretary to the three boards.
Right now, yes, with, with Michael's departure. Let's put, if we bring in someone to do what you're saying, just what Michael did, which was the videotaping. And the minutes, so that still leaves me with doing all the.
And the posting on YouTube.
The posting, the posting on YouTube realistically is, doesn't take that much time, um. But so we're leaving everything on my desk, plus we're adding short-term rentals and we're adding the residential parking permit. And the Board of Trustees meetings, so.
I think if we, you know, if we get the right person, even if we make it twenty-five hours a week, um. I mean, we need to get somebody who's technologically advanced, um. And, and, you know, we, we need to, we need to get the person that needs to do the job. I mean, it may be that we start out with twenty, twenty-five hours and find out that, that they can't handle it, but that's something, you know, if it's the right person and they. They really can't handle it, then we have to face that point, um. I think if we start out giving them less work, they're never gonna work up to what we need them to do.
And can we give, is twenty-five hours, isn't that over the limit for part-time, where, before we have to start paying benefits? I thought it was twenty-two.
I forget.
Check with Dan, Jeff, that's. Well, benefits is for full-time employees.
Yeah, there, there was an issue before Michelle came on, um, when we had, was it Ellen?
Yeah.
There was an issue then about, uh, and I think it might have been more a verbal agreement than an actual legal. Uh, thing that, you know, she was gonna get twenty-two hours or whatever she got and she was gonna get benefits, but I'm not sure that that was.
Yeah, I think, I think in one of the documents it called her a full-time employee and yet it said it was X number.
And, and it was an agreement when she came on board, I think, with whoever hired her, people on the board then. Uh, so that's something we probably should check with, um, that's his name.
Check with, I'll check with the county.
Yeah.
Okay. With personnel, yeah. I mean, some of these things too, as you look at them, the, the, the board work is the relentless work. That goes on week on week and, and is time-consuming.
Yep.
Some of this stuff is, is periodic, right? I don't know how frequently you're dealing with foils, but that's not an everyday, right? Um, taxes are cyclical, bill.
The fo- foils depends upon the issue.
It depends on the issue, absolutely, but it's not necessarily an everyday thing.
But if it comes in, it's horrendous.
Yeah, no, no question, no question. I know, I remember.
I, I will tell you that I average a foil a day.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah.
More than I thought.
Yeah, because what I've started to, and, but that also includes, I have people, I make sure when somebody wants building file. Building department files, or I, I make them do it via foil, because those requests, especially with the real estate market. It's impossible to keep up with on the phone, so I have, I, you know, I have people issue, uh, put in foil requests for that. And the real, and, and trust me, I get two, three, four calls a day just at a real estate agent's point to see a file, so.
Understood.
So do we have to advertise this? Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
I think we need to find out what the maximum is that we can, number of hours for still. And then, and then advertise it.
What, what did you say, Jeff, twenty dollars an hour?
Yeah, I don't remember what we agreed in the.
I thought I saw it when, as I was reading, but now I can't find it.
Yeah, so I talked to Michelle, that's what we've budgeted for, starting June one was, uh, twenty hours at twenty dollars an hour. And that was based on what we had paid, um, Lisa when she helped us out, when she filled in for Michelle.
And Jeff, do you, do you envision in the way that you've done with other recent job listings, putting it out to Low Hud and. A, a broader audience of publications?
Not necessarily. Um, I think we could probably just advertise locally and get a decent response. My understanding is that that's what Phillips Town did, they got a decent response.
Okay, so we'll start there.
Yep.
Can we also check with Michelle to make sure there's money in the budget to go to whatever the limp, what, what did we say, twenty-five?
Yep.
Hours.
There will be.
Do you think so, Jeff?
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, ad- advertise, allow Jeff to come up with a, an ad, um, and advertise for the positions.
Dep- dependent upon the, uh, the number of hours that that's confirmed with the county. And that Michelle says we've got the money in the budget.
Constitutes part-time, right? Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll get the hourly hours that we can max hours and make sure that we have the money in the budget. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right.
Yeah.
Um, I guess Will, you can open up to public, we are not taking, not, 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 not taking questions on the parking committee. Um, we will, if you have something on the hire or what we just said, or something else, fine. Um, definitely don't wanna go down into the weeds of parking right at this moment, so if anybody else is on for the question.
It's all that's left of parking.
Yep.
Everybody ran.
Okay, all right, so with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, is Dan raising his hand or saying, cool?
Cool.
Thanks, Dan.
Second.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night all, good meeting.
Have a good night.
See you tomorrow.
Night.
Yeah, tomorrow, great.